We need to order, uh, we do have a forum. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes.
I'll second it.
All right, so in favor, I.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carry. Morning, Rich.
Morning. I got copies. So we have on the agenda to review and resolutions for accepting the, uh, approval of the Highway one oh five paving project and the county engineer's authorization to sign a contract back to press. We have the approval of three ninety street bridge project and the, uh, three hundred fiftieth street bridge project. I guess after review on all these, um, talking about the paving project itself was pretty competitive. We kind of talked, we kind of discussed last week that was pretty competitive. So was the box cover project, the bridge project was a little bit out of the ordinary in far as getting one contractor and having such high bids. But after reviewing some discussion with DOT personnel, I don't think we're going to get better numbers if we try to reset it and relit it. I just don't think that, that going through the effort, we're not changing anything in the plan set to reduce costs, which there really isn't a whole lot we can do. Uh, we should probably just accept that bid and go forward with the construction. Our, our bridge funding has the ability to, uh, to absorb those extra costs. I mean, it does, it does affect the funding as far as other bridges go in the future. It's not detrimental, but we will be borrowed ahead on our bridge funding. We're allowed up to four and a half years. I don't think it puts us that far ahead. But when we consider it's only two hundred fifty thousand a year that we get it, 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 it plays a part in it. Now, we don't know, uh, if that new transportation bill gets funded through the feds or whatever, how they're going to handle that or not. So we don't know what's all coming down the pipeline. And if they do throw some more funding out there, does that make the bridge market more competitive yet? So I guess looking back at things and looking at the numbers, the biggest issues on the bridges were really the, the mobilization costs, I think. And the, and the actual bridge removal costs that really kind of threw things out more than anything. So I don't think you're going to change much of those, those costs at all, so.
Well, and obviously there must be a lot of demand for bridges if you only got one contractor to bid on.
Right, there are.
Lots of bridges need to be done.
Right.
They, and they, they, that, that trend has been changing, you know, like, yeah, we got set seven bids on a box cover, but a box cover is not a bridge. And, and so the technicality in the, in the procedure is a little different than a bridge versus a box cover. So.
Right.
To that extent, I guess, if you want to start on approval of any of these, we can go ahead and do that. I was going to look real quick here just to make sure. Yeah, there was mobilization costs where make sure that's the right bridge for us.
So the question at three hundred ninetieth one, that's always been a bridge, but could it be a box cover?
Well, I had them evaluate that, you know, they evaluated it for both ways and the bridge is what, is what the, the cost effectiveness.
Most cost effective.
For the, for the volume of water through there. Yeah, so the biggest issues were the, uh, biggest costs were the, the, uh, some of the bridge approach payment was a little bit more expensive, but it turned out to be a lot of the, on the bridge side with mobilization and removal of the existing bridges and how they were estimated. Engineer estimated twenty thousand dollars for bridge move, they came up with forty nine thousand. You know, that's a lot of known names, but as mobilization was almost double it from thirty eight thousand estimated to seventy thousand. So, and just some little things here and there between the estimates changed the numbers enough that I guess in the, in the grand scheme of things, I recommend that we approve these projects for construction. Keep in mind, we approve one oh five and then we've got to look at funding.
Right. Left, uh, update. Urban renewal, I was hoping to put that in the plan. Well, if you recommend then, Rich.
If you want, if we want to go through this, we can look at, I'll look at the, uh, the paving project first. We can, we can, if we're going to look at awarding these, we can look at, uh, the, for the first resolution for the highway one oh five paving, paving project, uh, the lowest bidder was Flynn Company for three million, six hundred ninety nine thousand, seven hundred eighty three dollars and seventeen cents. And the other four bidders were higher than that, but I might can release that stuff once we, now we get the, after the award.
So we've got a resolution here, twenty twenty one dot oh three dot two nine dot oh one, uh, to approve Flynn Company for the, uh, highway one oh five paving project.
I will make that a motion.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion on it? Uh, it's resolution, so I'll take a roll call vote, Lowberg.
Aye.
This maybe.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
All right, that resolution will pass and, uh.
And just for everybody's documentation, it includes, allows me to sign the contracts and bonds and everything for these projects.
Yes, yes, yep.
The next one is the three hundred fiftieth street box cover project. The lowest bidder on that one was Peterson Contractors Incorporated for a hundred and sixty five thousand, eight hundred and forty nine dollars and thirty cents. If anybody's curious, I think I emailed that to you, but the engineers estimate it was two hundred two thousand, six twenty seven. So we've got some really good numbers there with seven bidders.
They're a
Ryan Beck.
Right, oh, Ryan Beck, but it seems like they're a big company, it seems like a small job for them, but.
Yeah, but.
You know.
What I've been told is some of the dirt work projects are kind of scarce. It's, well, it's a, it's a market right now that's kind of people are comfortable with the, the market that's there, but a lot of dirt work guys can do these covers. So they've got probably enough to do that they can, you know, it was pretty competitive and they're all, most of these guys are dirt work contractors, so.
Well, maybe they've missed out on other bids and.
They could have.
Need some work too, so they went after some of this other stuff, but.
And these box covers going really fast. I mean, they, they take something out, it's making of the box covers in a, in a week, you know? There's a lot of the work going on, but to actually set stuff, it's really quick.
Right, okay. So this is, uh, resolution twenty twenty one dot oh three dot two nine dot oh three. The approval of three hundred fiftieth street box cover project and the authorization of county engineer to sign the documents. Take the motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Okay, your second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion and second, any other discussion? For the roll call vote, Lowberg.
Aye.
This maybe.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
That resolution will pass.
Well, this resolution's a little weird in the, the, the bridge one for three hundred ninety street, just because it's a combined contract with Mitchell County. Um, so in the resolution, while the contract is for one million, two hundred eleven thousand, ninety seven dollars and fifty cents, I did add that our portion of it is what our bridge project's going to cost for five hundred and thirty five thousand, two forty one ten. So just.
Okay. So you've got another one with Mitchell.
I'll have to do another resolution with Mitchell County because while the projects are tied in bidding, they're both separated as far as funding and project management.
All right, so with resolution twenty twenty one dot oh three dot two nine dot oh two, uh, approval of three hundred ninetieth street bridge project and allow county engineer to sign the documents to approve that. Uh, take a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote, Lowberg.
Aye.
This maybe.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Resolution will pass.
All right, thank you.
Are those all, all going to get done this year?
They should, yeah, now, okay, so the three hundred ninetieth street bridge is a late project, start of June, twenty twenty two.
Okay.
So depending on the schedule, and that's the one thing we were kind of curious about was why only one bidder, did they not look at the time schedule? Because that's a whole nother year out yet.
Yeah.
But they might have that kind of work if a lot of counties are bidding these with that federal funding and that much work is out there, you know, it could very well be that. So, you know, we don't, we'll know once we get contracts signed what their schedule is.
Right.
It might not get done this year, but it might, so we'll just see how that works.
But otherwise the other ones are scheduled for this year.
Yep, everything is scheduled to be done this year. Everything's scheduled for this year, at least the intent was, but they're under contract for this year, so.
Okay.
Good. Um, one other thing is next week I'll probably bring you the on April fifteenth, I need to have my DOT budget and program turn into the DOT and we've shuffled some things around here, not much, but project wise, we'll all of that finalized for you next week. We can look at it, see if there's anything you want to change, but by the twelfth, then we'll need to make sure that we approve that, so it's got to be by the fifteenth. I mean, it's, I would say it's ninety eight percent done, just want to do some final touches and see where we're at budget wise and and so we can look at it next week, review it. If we think it's good, we can approve it next week or we can hold off a week if there's something we want to move around, okay? Well, the guys are out going to be spot blading and, or blading and spot rocking this week while we've got some weather, so. I know it's going to be kind of, could be a little wet here in a couple of days, we'll see what happens, but good time to be out and getting stuff straightened out. And I'm working with Mike a little bit on some spring equipment issues and things like that. Um, we'll have, we're looking at also getting some of our old equipment out of here. I mean, we've got old excavators, old trucks and all kinds of stuff that we're just trying to bear with. Whether we take it to the scrapyard or whether we auction it off, I've been contacted by Fox Auction Company and maybe some of the smaller stuff we might work through him.
It's like a fox, can you do an online auction?
Yeah, he can do an online auction, but what I'm looking at is, is maybe some of, we've got most of the stuff we have here is probably going to just be local, we could probably use Fox Auction or maybe. I know I've talked to Franklin County, they've used Fox Auction for some of the smaller items and then they've used Purple Wave for some of the larger items. Cause Purple Wave, not to say that Fox Auction Company doesn't, but Purple Wave has a broader, seems to have a broader audience.
Purple Wave, Big Iron too.
Yeah, they, you know, you'll get people from, I know there's probably stuff that I, I talked to Franklin County, they had stuff go down to Brazil or whatever, you know, it doesn't. People buy that stuff down there and, and so it gets a broader range and maybe get better pricing. Not to say that you wouldn't anywhere the other way, other way, Purple Wave has a buyer's premium only.
Okay.
Fox cups, uh, Fox auctions, uh, they both, they did both, but they cap it. So I mean, it's, and if some people know that there's a, there's a, also a seller's fee, maybe then the buyer's fee is so high, maybe they bid higher too. It's just try something different and see what comes out of it. We don't have a lot of great stuff to sell. I mean, but just kind of clean the yard out a little bit and get rid of the stuff that's been set. We got the whole flatbed semi trailer that's got cracks in the frame, there's no reason to set there anymore. We're not going to weld it up and fix it, might as well just haul it out and make some room, so. That's going to, we're trying to do some of that spring cleaning, I guess.
Sure. Oh, some of that green, I do.
Um, and then by the end of this, we are by, I guess by Wednesday, we got to have our crazy, we got to have our salt order in for next year, so. They want numbers, preliminary numbers by Wednesday, so they know, you know, what they've got coming on the pipeline and and on Mitchell County, they asked whether we could, you know, the, the comment was, can we rail it in? And I just, I don't want to, right now, for us, there's no place to do that here, we're just going to stick with the DOT auction or the DOT bidding on, on salt here, just you get it when you need it, you don't have to worry about somebody else saying, come get it now or else, you know?
Well, that's the thing is, you kind of, or, you know, train comes in, you have to unload it, they might give you three days and get it on the ground, or then where are you unloading it, are they going to let you pilot? Or.
Right.
You don't have to put in trucks right away and get it out of there in three days?
And if you pilot, do we have other issues with EPA and things like that?
Yeah, for runoff and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got the terminal there, but we don't have, you know, to try to work with railroads and I, right now, it's not a good time to even try to consider it. I don't even know if by then, okay, so now you got to dump there, then you got to handle it again to get it.
Yeah.
It's, I don't, sounds easier. It's easier and logistically, it's logistically easier to say, call it up, bring it in, we're ready for you.
And they're hauling it off the river.
They're hauling it off of barges and they've got the whole setup there and so I think, but I got to figure out what we're going to need for salt, I don't know. I think we're pretty full right now and I think this winter kind of helped, kind of keep the stockpiles, maybe we can back down what we order for next year. So.
Okay.
I think that's all I've got for you this morning.
Sure. Sounds good, thank you, Rich.
Yep.
Uh, drainage?
We'll be doing it all day.
All afternoon, huh? No claims this week?
No.
Reports?
Nope.
Payroll eligibility? Sheriff. Must be just north, must be out there, probationary three. Increase the wage. Sheriff's office.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve the payroll increase, their second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All favor, I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, electric license?
Yeah, this is a ownership change that we just had a run through.
Ship change at common bill. Yeah, motion to approve the ownership change for electric license at common bill.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All favor, I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, safety committee discussion. New updates on that?
We got a meeting coming up here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll contact. Okay. And I think there's, I said a problem. Get them involved or should be one at a time or whatever.
When you say April?
Nine, it doesn't really work, it is.
All right.
I mean, I don't know, it's coming.
Oh.
It's coming up anyway.
I'll get all the people I talked up to and see if they can get some pricing by then, see what they, they've got, so. You guys could kind of look it over in your committee meeting that we can decide.
Fair, absolutely.
And I got a call from Dean Shady, he's keeping an eye on stuff and wondered if you were reelected or not.
Yeah.
And he called like the day before and said, uh, I can't tell you yet.
He didn't call me, Mark, that Mark Shaker, the one, first one we talked about, he called me, they're, they're working in. They're definitely, he's probably Dean's tech.
Of the across.
That's, I know, you know, yeah.
All right, I'll keep working on nothing. Um, National Child Abuse Awareness Prevention Month proclamation. So part of one of the committees that he uses on, right?
Yep, partners with children.
Um, this is proclamation, April is recognized as, uh, Child Abuse Prevention Month and Child Abuse, National Child Abuse Awareness Day is April first, twenty twenty one. Whereas we're keeping, keep, we recognize keeping children safe is everyone's business. Whereas the children of the communities of Worth County are the future. Whereas the safety of and well-being of children should be everybody's priority, responsibility and duty. Whereas the communities are encouraged to promote programs and activities that enable children to thrive and grow in healthy environments. Whereas child abuse can have short-term and long-term effects and lasting effects on children, adolescents and development. So on this day, sign this day, twenty ninth of March, twenty twenty one, the Worth County Board of Supervisors would like to recognize proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month in April. Take a motion to approve the proclamation.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Their second?
I'll order it.
All right, any other discussion? Still roll call vote, Lowberg.
Aye.
This maybe.
All right.
Stone.
Aye.
And it looked like there was enough room on that line for all you guys to.
Okay.
So. Did they want a copy of that badge?
Not to my knowledge, no. It was wanted everybody April first, but in the county offices, word blew for awareness. Then make a proclamation. I'll find out though, okay?
Sure. All righty, uh, memorial request for Karen Abrams.
Teresa was just in last week and was wondering about possibly a bench somewhere. And she, now she was aware of the first talk of, of possibly building or whatever, so she was pretty flexible on, you know, whatever, and I don't know if you'd go kind of by the memorial or if you had to hold out for a little bit or, but if you guys want to discuss it over sometime.
I suppose we could get somewhere where we know it wouldn't move regardless of what happens around here. You know. Walk around.
She had mentioned beyond them all over the fairgrounds, but they really don't have any here, so.
Right.
I thought it was kind of cool.
Yeah. No, it should be, I mean, something placed here, because, of course, he's been around this building for a long, long time.
Yeah.
A lot of time in this county, so I, I wouldn't have any problem doing that, we can kind of walk around, I guess.
Yeah.
See what everybody thinks, we'll be around today, so we take a peek at it.
Yeah.
Might not want to do it afternoon. Go all around.
Yeah, so, I think that'd be a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um.
We can do this one, this has to go before the budget, so that's just where we ended up on salaries for the elected officials.
Okay.
They're not spectacular, but they are what they are.
All right, so this resolution is, uh, to approve the salary recommendations for elected officials, uh, compensation board. Um, resolution twenty twenty one dot oh three dot two nine dot oh four. The county compensation board needs to only recommend the compensation schedule for elected officials for fiscal year immediately following in accordance with Iowa Code chapters three thirty one dot nine oh five and three thirty one dot nine seven. And whereas the Worth County Compensation Board met on December second, twenty twenty and made the following salary recommendations for elected officials for fiscal year beginning July twenty twenty one. Um, auditor, a three and a half percent increase. County attorney, one percent increase, reporter, three and a half percent increase, sheriff, five percent increase. Um, supervisor chair, one percent increase, supervisors, one percent increase and a treasurer, three and a half percent increase. Um, therefore be resolved that the county board of supervisors approve the following salary adjustments for the following elected official for fiscal year beginning July twenty, July first, twenty twenty one. Um, supervisors are going to approve two percent for the auditor, point five seven percent, the attorney, two percent for the recorder, two point eight five percent for the sheriff, zero percent for the supervisor chair, zero percent for the supervisors and two percent for the treasurer. Um, approve this day, March twenty ninth, twenty ninth day of March, twenty twenty one. So I need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dot oh three dot two nine dot oh four.
So moved.
There's motions, there's second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote? Lowberg?
Aye.
This maybe?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Motion, this resolution will pass. About five minutes before a budget hearing, so I'm going to jump down to, uh, Winworth Betco. Melissa. Maybe. Wait.
Do it on.
Or do I have to go?
Y'all should be able to.
I asked her to unmute.
Maybe she's on the phone or busy right now, so. Um, I did get a message from her. Um, we did meet with the Iowa northern last week. And, uh, group looking at developing in the logistics park. Um, sounds like we're getting one step closer to maybe getting something done there, so. A very good meeting. Went for a train ride around the loop and kind of looked everything over, it was really, really nice, so.
Super secret.
Yeah, it's just quiet until they know what's going to go, because they don't want somebody else sneaking in and taking their secrets, so. Um, and then our executive board meeting has changed. It'll be April nineteenth instead of April twelfth, you saw that, right?
Yep.
As of a, uh, regional.
Meeting.
EMA meeting that day, right?
Uh, yeah, it's a, it's a new one that they're trying to develop over there as far as disaster, long-term disaster recovery.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And they had a few meetings, I guess, before and they've, they haven't had anything going on since, I think, January twenty twenty is the last time they met and they want to meet again. And that happened the same day.
Sure.
And she's the secretary.
I see you're awake now, Melissa.
Yeah, sorry, I had to run into the school and get the schoolwork. Um, the only other thing too is Enos, if we could connect later today when you're done with all of your meetings, we can talk about that ripple grant. I should have more information by then.
Gotcha. Has John and, uh, Mark got back to you?
No.
That's, yeah, it's going to be due the first?
Yes.
I thought it was due the, the end of the Mar- of March, so that's why I kind of pushed for a meeting this week.
Hopefully they'll both get back in touch with you before you tell, you talk to me about it.
Okay.
Need to know where they stand on it.
And you have meetings until three today?
Probably.
Probably, yes.
We might be, I'll give them a break in between to call you.
All right, sounds good.
A little longer. Great, so. Anything else, Melissa?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
But she said meeting this week, I, I think I forgot to do something with.
No.
Oh.
That's just me and her.
WCTA.
No, on the twelfth. The one you got to be concerned with is the.
It is the twelfth?
No.
It was the twelfth.
It was the twelfth, now we're going to the nineteenth, I don't know. Winworth Betco meeting.
The executive board meeting changed on nineteen. No, I mean, they're talking about just what, you know, so.
Yeah.
We're not pulling any wool over your eyes yet.
No, no, I just, I know I saw something and I totally forgot the.
We're trying to get better at, at filling you in beforehand.
Twenty-four hours before.
Yeah.
Yeah, over twenty-four.
At least twenty-four hours.
I need time to pause.
Um, I don't see Jason on this morning, I know, um, set pretty good there, but as far as that wastewater or stormwater permit, looks like it's an annual thing now, so I just think what we'll have to do is because keep that here, we'll keep paying it as responsible, responsible people for it. And then we could just assess the landowners as they start buying, assessing other taxes as part of it, otherwise you're trying to start an organization or, uh, association and.
That changes all the time.
And if you get corporate people, corporate companies out there, it's hard to deal with anybody. So I think we just keep it here, we just pay it and then just turn the cost over to them on taxation. It's not going to be much, I mean, what is it, three hundred fifty dollars for three years, so. We split that up amongst eleven lots, it's, again, it's not much, so. But I think this way we know it gets taken care of and we can be responsible for that, so. I'll double check with Jason, I just make sure that's kosher, but I'm sure it'll be okay. All right, we'll jump back up, um, it is, I'm right at nine o'clock, I think, here. Um, so we're going to have the fiscal year twenty two budget hearing, so I'm going to recess the regular meeting and, uh, take a motion to open the, uh, budget hearing.
So moved.
Their second?
I'll second it.
All right, all favor, I?
All right, aye.
Aye, okay, the budget hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty two is open. Jackie, have you got any questions or concerns in your office?
None that I know of.
So emails or phone calls that you know?
Just, just my concerns.
Yeah.
The ones that are always there.
We've all got our concerns. Uh, is there anyone on the meeting from the public that has any questions or concerns about the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty two budget?
It was posted in the newspaper as legally.
Required.
Yeah.
Followed all the rules like normal?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Going once.
Anybody in the meeting want to discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget? This will be their last call. There's a motion to close the public hearings, their second?
I'll second it.
All favor, I?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed, I will reconvene on a regular meeting. Um, resolution twenty twenty one dot oh three dot two nine dot oh five. Adoption of Worth County, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two proposed budget. Whereas the board supervisors have a public hearing on Monday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, to receive comments regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget expenditures and revenues as. expenditures and revenues as was published per public notice in the March seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty twenty-one issue of official county newspapers, the Northwood Anchor and the Manly Signal, and presented at the public hearing on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Therefore, the board supervisors hereby approve the proposed fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget as was presented and published. And budget certification is attached, passed and adopted at this twenty-ninth day of March twenty twenty-one. Take a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
There's a second?
I will second it.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, lower.
I.
So maybe.
All right.
Stone, I. This resolution will pass. Ten minutes until the end. Show up now, people service, Chris.
Did you guys mind recording a week early? Hopefully got it, got it, read through it.
Yep.
Questions?
Well, I didn't see any. The only question I had and I, I had a couple phone conversations with Chris McMillan and Steve Robinette talking contract stuff.
Yep.
But we got that bill last week for young plumbing to repair chlorine lines and the permeganite lines.
Oh, you put that up and that's supposed to go to me.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, that's, and that's, I knew you were on vacation, so I wasn't gonna call and bother you. Um, but like I said, I was just having conversations with those guys and asked about it, but if that was supposed to go to you, then we'll.
But we still technically pay for it, right?
You do.
Yeah.
Either, either you guys pay for it now or I can pay for it. It still comes out of my maintenance budget. It's part, be part of my maintenance budget for you guys.
Okay, that, and so we want to pay for it once, not twice, basically. Yeah, so, okay. And we did approve to pay it just because, um, we want to pay our bills, obviously, so.
He should have split that, sent that to me.
Okay, yeah, it was separate invoices, but it did come to us, so, okay, just, that's, that's fine, um, and that's all I'd ask. Steve was just.
Well, never blow them past the budget anyway, probably, so.
Good.
Right.
We do every year.
Yeah, but I just want to get a little clarification on that.
Yep.
So, no, that's just fine, so.
Yep. Then the, the inspection went real well. Um, I had two gigs on me. One was, uh, they want us to the sledge that we apply, we're just, um, we can put like fourteen hundred and fifty milligrams per liter of copper on a field, but we're at like fifteen hundred. So since I bump over that, they want to keep track of annually appearing from now until eternity. And so I can only put so much on a field, which we're we've calculated, we, we had, we had to do this calculation and sometime we've been here, we've been flying sledge for thirteen years. And we only put on like, max we put on like, like twelve hundred pounds, we put on like three point two pounds over thirteen years, so. It's, and that's combined totally. Well, I, I'm on my fourth field already, so we're never gonna max out a field in eternity, so.
Sure.
Um, and one year will be above, one year will go, you know, and just the, the kind of roller coasters. Because it costs reward thing, you know, we can put more fly phosphate in there and I can bring it down. But all we're doing is recording these numbers, not, and that, recording numbers and cautioning. So if we keep the cost down a little bit, you know, we're gonna bump it one year and one year will blow. We'll be above and we'll be below. And then the other thing with this, we do do two types of D O out there. We do a D O in, in the tank and D O in the effluent, and I reported the tank D O on two months out of the last three years, so I just had to redo the M O Rs for two months for any of the correct E, uh, D O and then send it back to them. That's all done already. We got the calculation done already, so.
They're okay with that? Being up and down like that? It's just more of a technicality, people.
And since we're such a small contributor, really, you know, if we were Minneapolis or something or Des Moines, you'd rather hammer that down and get it down and you don't have to worry about that.
Yep.
Part of it's our soft water, soft water aggressive, so that's why we had to follow you try and coat that to do a better job, so we're not, because we didn't do any following. Um, because one year the team didn't want to pay for it, one year the team didn't want to pay for it, it was like nineteen hundred. So it makes a big difference.
Jumps that far.
Yeah.
That's good, at least. If the D R happy, that's all that matters. They play by their rules.
Yeah.
Okay? And then, uh, Jason's got us a price for an estimate for connecting to that blue water tower.
Okay.
If need be, so I'm gonna forward that on to Mike in your guys' office for that, doing the water rate study. And then, um, uh, he's also getting us some figures to get our water towers inspected.
Okay.
Where I get that blue one inspected just to see since nobody's looked at it for a number of years.
It's been since it's been built, it's been. Five years, probably five years, right?
Yeah. And then the, the casinos, one that, one that's in service is gonna get that inspected as well and see what's going on there so we can like apply on the pack if you need to do some work, so.
Oh, we, there's definitely work to be done there. Gotta be painted, that's the problem we're having.
Yeah, so. He's gonna get some figures for that for us, so. All right, you guys got anything else for Chris? Okay, thank you. All right. Almost there. Uh, I said I'm gonna get my paper off to Joe Thompson, but that one will be covered for the board appointments.
Hey, maybe we can do advertising on the water tower.
There you go. For sale.
Yeah. That'd be my favorite.
With vacations, there's a little from here. Apartment heads, COVID nineteen policies, I don't want to think we need to worry too much about that, do we? We just kind of made our adjustment to
Next thirty days.
Go through next month, right?
Yep.
I just had, I mean, I haven't seen much difference. A lot of people are still requiring masks, we're strongly recommending them, so I think we made the right move to push it off for one more month and see how it all plays out. Mark's got a chat in here, says safety needs twelve, twelve. At ten AM and F E H is at ten thirty.
Yep.
So another busy day.
It's a half an hour enough for you guys or just wondering if.
Might not be a period.
Have somebody.
We have a bunch of, yeah, we do a couple guys reasoning and, you know, that's basically all we'll probably be talking about that day.
You could do it the next, you could either do it the week before or the week after.
Yeah.
Nineteenth. Winworth Betco, if you can get done after a meeting before that.
But then F E, it, it was a lot of F E H.
Whatever works for everybody else on that watch list right now, so.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna be all that non-powerful either if they want to. Think if we need to adjust our day for our meeting, that'll be the time to do it so we can.
Not out for now. Did F E H, did Christie make it here Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
She had her running shoes on.
Good.
Like the nineteenth, there isn't anything booked for.
Just tell you, Winworth Betco.
Oh, shoot.
Which is eleven.
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty.
Yeah, so.
Well, which I guess, I don't know.
I need to zoom in to catch up or whatever. If we got down here, but whatever.
Or you could pick another day of the week.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Do it on Monday.
When, when are you gonna be in the field?
The day before.
Soon as you can.
That, that day, probably.
Soon as I can.
All right, it is nine ten, so let's go ahead and do our district two board supervisors special election canvas.
First we'll do the four. Or three cents. So basically, um, which, which one you have on top there, maybe? Yeah, probably a little up there on top.
Fertile.
Fertile, okay.
Fertile, Hamilton, Silver Lake. That's it. This is both the old Bristol.
Silver Lake. So. It fertile. We have seven for Tom Bacon. Twenty-eight for Mark. Seventeen for Dean. Twenty-six for Brian and no ratings. Did you say Hamilton next?
Hamilton, yes.
Yeah, Hamilton. We have four for Dakin. Twenty first Navy. Forty-nine for Mueller. Ten for Nelson, no ratings.
Silver Lake. Bristol.
Okay, um. Twelve for Tom. Sixty-seven for Mark. Six for Dean. Seventy-three for Brian Nelson, zero ratings. Kansas. Twenty-five for Tom. Thirty-six for Mark. Forty-one for Dean. Twenty for Brian. One rating. And then that comes up with full holes. And that comes up with fifty-nine for Tom. One twenty-eight for Dean. One thirty-five for Brian. One sixty-nine for Mark. Total is four ninety-one plus one. Um, rating, so that should check off.
Yep.
Okay. That's it. So we sign these two things and hopefully we can avoid elections for a while. There's those two.
So we need a motion, correct?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the special election canvas for district two. I make a motion to approve the special election canvas for district two. I will second that motion. Any other discussion?
And technically, you should probably.
All favor I?
All right.
All right. opposed? Right. Motion will pass.
You got the certificate, that's what we can sign. I'll do that a little bit later.
Yeah.
Can't, though, I want to get elections done.
It's only been doing.
I want to get the house for the next year so I can get out of this chairperson seat.
Make me sign if you please for that.
Never screen them.
Well. Well, and, um, I have officially replaced every one of you now.
We're not starting over.
No. Please, I don't want to. I'm probably the only auditor that's ever been there.
Yes, I know.
In her county anyway.
No.
Jackie, does she find the right spot on the top one?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you. All right. Good, what is hearing? Special election canvas. All right. Oh, we've had this discussion in the last few weeks with, uh, the resolution on the future tip revenues. And, uh, I've added, had Jackie add the ordinance as well because it kind of all ties together. The ordinance went with the resolution, the resolution worked the ordinance. Um, I do agree, we need to rewrite something at some point in the very near future. Um, now we have a full house, we know who we've got, it's gonna stay here. That's why I want to raise back the table now. I, I, I believe it's the proper thing to do is repeal this ordinance. I've been told that by our zoning administrator and our former interim zoning administrator who's been, came with the zoning board for numerous, numerous years. Um, but this is not a good ordinance. It needs to be repealed. It needs to be gone. And, and I totally agree with those guys, so um, discussion I'd like to have is, is putting, setting a date to repeal this ordinance.
You want to, you got to set the date.
Yeah. I mean, it works backwards.
Yep.
From how you approve an ordinance, same thing, stuff if you post it and do some readings, um, it's the same process, so.
Well, we need some assistance from Jeff on timing and all that good stuff, or?
Um, it's, it's in Iowa code to no less than four, no more than twenty days. Um, the only question we'll have to find out is.
And what do we put in the paper?
Right, because like if you approve one, you put it in the paper once it's approved. Um, but, you know, we've got to post it like in your office, so if anybody wants to come in and look at it, they can. Um, and then you've got to post it for something that's between four and twenty days. And then you can, uh, start the public hearing afterwards, but the biggest thing, I guess, would be do we post it first in the paper that we're gonna repeal it? Or bring it to the table to repeal because, you know, we're kind of gotta work backwards on it, post it for so many days and also post it in Jackie's office.
Normally the newspapers start to clock.
Right.
So.
Okay.
It's just what, what needs to be out there.
Yep. So I guess that's something we want to do. Make a motion to put out there to repeal ordinance twenty eighteen dot twelve dot oh three um, to advertise the paper and start the process that we feel in the order. I'll, I'll make that a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there is a select motion and a second to, uh, set the process to repeal ordinance. Um, we'll do a roll call vote, lower.
All right.
So maybe.
All right.
Stone, I. Okay, we will start that process and try to get it to the paper by Friday. So it can be posted out next week and get all the final details on that.
So then if you repeal the ordinance, does the resolution automatically go away or do you want to do that too?
We will, I'm assuming. Yeah, it's, it's associated with that, so we probably, just to be.
That's your eyes and.
Yeah, we'll probably repeal that as, as well, and then we can write another resolution to make the adjustments like we talked before, you know, the categories are fine, it's just those percentages is the biggest issue. So then we can, you know, whatever we decide here, we can, we can do a new or, a new resolution with that, so. Any other discussion on that or the resolution? Um. If we can go down to supervisor weekly reports.
I had North Iowa Children's Alliance. And, uh, basically we went in and, uh, we ended up putting seven thousand dollars in sleep slacks for Mercy One deliveries and six thousand dollars in diapers for the WIC program, and then we elected officers. Basically, we're just helping out. We did a little discussion about child daycare and all the problems they're having right now and how to re, reimburse them. And I think you guys, did you guys get emails on that?
Could've.
I don't know if she sent that to me or what, but at the present time, if you've been on it, they automatically send you a check each month because they've had a forty percent decrease in children in daycare from the pandemic, so they're trying to keep those available, so when we come out of the pandemic, we have places for people to take their kids to. Uh, then I did the North Iowa Regional Housing Authority. And, uh, basically there we've got, um, Northwood is full. Um, Manly has one available opening down there. But of the hundred and twenty-one units in the eight counties, there's only nine of them that are available, so they're pretty much they keep a note full too. There, they had a big discussion over, the Department of Human Services wants us to give vouchers for foster youth that are coming out of foster care for eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. There was a big discussion over that, of putting that age bracket in these units. But it did get approved and they are gonna go ahead with those twenty-five vouchers. But it did get approved, and they are gonna go ahead with those twenty-five vouchers to help those kids, because once they come out of the. Foster care, it's just, no, okay, and they, they've also got stuff out there for training, for job training, this kind of stuff, so. But, so that's basically the two that I had during the week.
And, you know, there is a shortage of daycare in the whole area, so. Hate to lose anymore. Yep. So, okay, Mark. Okay, I had. Care connections on Tuesday, I was only able to sit in part of that meeting. Just finalizing budgets and. Always discussion on, obviously, state stuff with child mental health being part of it. Maybe getting some funding, maybe not. That's been a discussion for a couple of years, it's. So I know all of our lobbyists and representatives down there are trying to push to get some more funding.
For the children.
For the children.
They pushed that, I mean, is it, I don't even know what I'm talking about, so it's already, we are mandated to do it, aren't we?
Yeah, it's supposed to, July first. Supposed to be a mandate, but everybody's kinda holding out, hoping that the state's gonna help fund it, because it's. You know, otherwise it's gonna start putting pressure, start maxing out everybody's levies, and something like, most, I shouldn't say. A lot of the regions are already maxed out, so it's, it's tough for them to get more money when they're maxed out. So it's kind of a, it's a headache, but, but everybody's kinda fighting back and forth, trying to get something figured out for at least a little bit of funding, so. And then, well, I left that meeting earlier, I had met with Iowa Northern and a group down there. And it's, we've got good feelings about it, hopefully, we'll hear some news in maybe the next thirty to sixty days. On what's gonna happen there. I know they were talking about meeting again in April sometime, first, second week of April, so. Hopefully we'll have more info from them and, and we can maybe hear what's gonna happen down there, so. And that's all I had last week. And we got the meeting switched to Winworth Betco. And our many, many meetings with F E H. Okay, well, if there's nothing else to come before the board, I would take the motion to adjourn. For a second?
I'll second it.
I'll favor I. Bye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
The other thing you could do on that March, uh, April twelfth maybe is back it up to nine thirty, if you're, if we keep the agenda.